First over this is approval of the minutes of August fifth, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approves period. We're going to go to item D twenty-four first, or twenty-five first. That's the ordinance to create section one point oh six of the RMC relating to user fees for the residential private property sanitary inflow and infiltration reduction program.
Move forward.
There's a motion for approval.
Second.
And there's a second discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman, like.
Did everyone get a chance to see Scott Post's comments on the email back from Rebecca Grill today?
Yes.
Just want to make sure everybody had a chance to see that. I guess I'm, I'm still, I'd like to maybe ask, does the attorney expound a little bit? Because I still have some concerns about it.
Yep.
And I know you, I mean, it's still tax versus fee question.
Is that, is that where we're at?
Well, there were two points there is. One was, the, the answers to Rebecca's questions, you made it sound like this was mandatory or something as part of a state enforcement thing. It's not.
Yeah.
There are policy reasons to do this, policy reasons not to, that's your decision. But nothing's mandating now to do this. We're not under court order to do this or anything, so I just wanted to clear that up. The other one had to do with his answer to the question of, you know, fees, these are predicted to go off X amount of time, but taxes don't. And Joe's answer, and I've discussed it with him afterwards, I think he, unfortunate choice of words, but he said that, you know, the tax limits that we have are not sustainable. Well, we can't have this, if you're proposing this as an alternative to tax limits, because that then makes us sound more like a tax. From my very first opinion that I gave, that's what we have to avoid. This is a tax, it's illegal, there's, there's no doubt about it. We don't have the authority to tax for this. It has to be a true fee. So if it's something in lieu of a tax, will be sunk.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman, where's that?
My understanding, the only way that it could be classified as a tax is if you took the money and then put it into the general fund, or took the money and applied it to something else. If the, if it is a fee and it is used specifically for the intent, then it stays a fee.
If, if we, if we created for a specific purpose, to pay for a particular service and we keep it that way, then it's a fee, right?
Which is, I think, the insurance policy on top of it. In other words, I think that's what everybody in this room wants, is that that money specifically goes for that purpose.
And that's fine. The, the initial authorization isn't where I have a problem. It's years down the road, some other alderman who says, you know what, there's a pot of money, let's spend it on that, take this and spend, that's where we'll run into trouble. Yeah, initially approving it as a fee is, well, my opinion and the outside legal opinions is perfectly legitimate. Where we start to divert from that and start talking about it as some kind of an alternative to a tax, where we run into trouble. Now is the only purpose of my correcting what, what Joe had said there.
And to expand on that, if that particular alderperson in those upcoming years would, would recommend that, I would hope that the city attorney at that particular point would say that, no, this is a fee strictly for that point, and, and the money must be used for that. You can't take that money and put it into the general fund or toward another purpose.
Okay, hopefully. Well, a lot depends on.
If not, they will be in litigation at that point.
The laws in the meantime, too. So it's, it's always going to be a fluid situation. That's just a concern now looking forward.
Alderman, tell me.
Scott, so, so the question is, if, if there's no clause that could be applied, that any changes in the future could be lifted, you know, by the council, but not just say one alderman, you know, two aldermen, they're proposing to change that, you know? So to me, can it be a cause that no change could be made until, say, a full council determined to drop that?
Well, I mean, it's always a case that it takes the full council to act. An individual alderman or even a group of aldermen don't have any authority to change ordinances, so you have to be, you know, acting as a county council and majority board.
Okay, that's, that's, so to me, I mean, really not foreseeing any, any problem in the future, like I said, ten years down the road, you know, if any new council comes aboard and tried to divert that, you know, to make the changes, you know? I mean, I think it's possible in life. I mean, I could be there tomorrow, you know?
Mr. Chair. Alderman.
As it sits right now, it's an isolated segregated lockbox fund.
Right, that's the, I can't speak to the finances of what they're doing, but that was my understanding, was we would create a separate fund and that's where it would be put, and the fees would go in there and the payouts would come out of there.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. For the administration of this program, can the fund be used by staff to fund the water department, things like that? I mean, this fund should really only be used for the private purpose, right? So we're not going to have a city engineer dipping into it for their sa, you know, us dipping into it to pay their salary or us having.
Oh, we will.
Well, I don't.
We may have to hire staff to make this happen.
You get the question.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, there's sort of two aspects to that. One is sort of the mission creep, if it starts to expand and covers more things, you run into the risk of it's now being used as a general tax. But the, the law is fairly expansive over what covers a program, and that's going to include all the administrative costs of that program. So if there are people who are part of their salary and benefits, we can say, you know, the assistant engineer spends X number of hours per year working on this, here's the cost of it, we can use that to pay salary and benefits, because that's an administrative cost of that program.
Well, we wouldn't come out and say, everyone into the water department, here's your, your new funding source.
A hard, hard thing to explain.
Good.
How that's not a general tax, right?
Okay, good. Now, in terms of user fees versus tax, basically the difference is, a user fee, the person who pays into it has to get the direct benefit out of it.
Not a direct benefit, they have to receive a benefit.
A benefit out of it.
Not a direct benefit necessarily.
And going to the, the email we had from the city administrator this afternoon with only twenty percent of the meter sheds out of compliance, that means the other eighty percent are fully in compliance, could an argument be made that, for people in those meter sheds that, hey, we're fine, we don't have a problem, we're not getting the unique benefit out of this, it's going to pay for something elsewhere in the city?
Well, they can't, because everyone contributes to the problem. Everyone is contributing to the problem, to the INI problem.
So how do people on the west side, for example, contribute to a meter shed on the east side? Because aren't, aren't they separated?
But we're looking at the city as a whole.
Mm-hmm.
And asking for that type of detail is, really undercuts the overall program. Again, as I've mentioned before, that everyone contributes to their problem. I am a perfect example of that. My house is new, I live on probably one of the highest points of the city, my chances of actually flooding out or having a backup or a collapse, it won't happen in my grandchildren's lifetimes if they choose to live in house. But my sewage still contributes to the problem. My pipes, even though they're in good condition, still leak.
Mm-hmm.
They don't leak very much, but PVC pipe still leaks.
Right, and there are joints and things like that.
As much as your car tires leak air, which is why you got to fill them up every once in a while, even though my system still leaks. Everyone contributes to the problem.
I guess what I'm asking is, is if we're in different meter sheds and our meter shed doesn't have a problem, you know, that, could someone, and I, I don't want to make it east versus west, it just happens to be that the meter sheds with the problem are on the older side of the city with the problem, should the, to a user fee definition, what benefit does a person in one meter shed get by paying for the meter shed somewhere else within the city? What benefit does that individual get?
Well, first, you got to look at this as not a short-term project. This is a hundred years, so things are going to shift in a hundred years. Everything is going to get old and everything will be replaced. But what'll happen now is the people that are looking to get the rehabilitations done are the ones that are probably the oldest and have the most. So by nature of the program, it's probably going to self-target the bad areas, but it's, it's also going to help if somebody has a problem anywhere. So it is a benefit to everybody. Protection is there, if you had a problem, you can get taken care of. So, and, and we're moving towards the goal of reducing our INI.
So if, if the real problem with most of the failures and things are occurring in those older areas of the city, wouldn't maybe a targeted program be a little bit more beneficial? I mean, there's nothing in here, I mean, I understand it's not desirable for the city to go to properties and say, hey, we're requiring you to do an inspection of your, your lateral because we feel it's failing and it's impacting our, our property and, you know, the, the public system, and, and because of you it's, it's causing the need for this, but at the same time, even a homeowner, just because they can't see it, they still have to maintain their laterals. Why, you know, I would think we could, instead of waiting a hundred years, we could turn this thing over faster, maybe as, as construction occurs on a street, you say, you know, just like we're doing right now with MMSD stuff, we're here, we'll line your pipes for free through the MMSD program. Why, we're, we're depending on people to voluntarily come to us with this program, but we're not addressing the problem perhaps where it's really at.
We're, there's two ways that this could go. We could go out and seek volunteers, give a reason to have it done, you know, show them what condition their laterals in, and then the people that are having the problem are going to show us their lateral needs help. So that can happen all over. And we're, we found it in, in laterals on the west side as well as on the east side. So, and this is a citywide problem, and it should be a citywide fix. I don't think you could find enough money to target just one area if you just charge the people in that basin. The fees would be so high that, you know, in order to get anything done, that nobody would want to do it, so. But if it's looked at as, it's a citywide problem, we got to deal with it, we all pay for that extra flow, because MMSD sends us a bill for all the sewers they treat. So everybody's paying a little extra because we got leaky pipes.
But at the same time, Joe, I think, just because we can't see the pipe, it's still the homeowner's responsibility to maintain that pipe. Shouldn't there be some, if, if we're going to do this, some mechanism where we pick an area every year and say, this is our targeted area, we need, we're requiring an inspection of your lateral? Can we do that?
That's, lined in here as one of the options. When we don't get enough requests, we're going to target an area and ask for volunteers, but we're going to show them their laterals leaking. At that point, if they did say, no, they're not going to fix it, we do have the authority to say you have to fix it, because now we know that it's leaking.
Now, there was something else mentioned by the, the attorney, the one who reviewed the whole program, and he mentioned something about they had some lead connections in Madison, and what they did is they would come in and fix it, but then they'd apply it against the property, and the property owner, I think, had like, mentioned something like twenty years to pay it off, and it, it went with the property as opposed to the property owner. Is that another way we could go? Wherein, you've got a, a water, a lateral that has to get lined, it's going to cost five thousand dollars, we tell you what, we're going to let you put it on as a special assessment covered over twenty years, and by the way, most people sell their homes within the twenty years, and the full cost will be reimbursed at the time of sale.
The way, the way the program was set up was the special assessment does go on as a lien on the property.
Mm-hmm. For the fifteen hundred, but I'm saying, why not put the entire amount as a special assessment over twenty years for the people who actually are causing the problem?
To fund that special assessment.
Mm-hmm.
So we got to pay a contractor to actually do the work. He's not going to wait until their, their lien gets paid off. So you got to have a fund to draw from to pay for all this work.
Right.
That's what this fund will do.
But at the same time, I mean, I don't like, I don't like debt any more than the other person, but, you know, is that something where, you know, maybe we create a, a separate fund that's bonded and, or debt bond? Well, the, it carries, it carries through, it accomplishes the problem, it's a structural debt, it doesn't really cost us anymore because it's getting put on the homeowner who's using it. It's just like a TIF, the amount that you've got on the TIF ends up getting applied to the, the property and gets sold off over time. I mean, is there a way to, I don't know, Mark would know, what's that?
You're talking about almost a million dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
That would be paid out of the tax money.
No, you would, you'd put it, you'd have a separate fund, let's say, and every year you'd, you'd bond for a million dollars, that million dollars goes specifically to these people. They could pay it off immediately, which would go then to pay off the debt, or the amount would be amortized, and the person who's actually getting the benefit is paying the interest on that debt. You see what I'm saying? It's just an alternative, you know?
You still have to set up a fund, and you still have to raise fees in order to fund program like that.
Do you, Mark?
Because, because the costs are upfront.
He's our finance guy in the back.
What's the question? I'm sorry?
My, my question was, is, would there be a way, instead of having a program like this where everyone's paying into it and some may, it may be a hundred years before they see the benefit out of it, or their property sees the benefit out of it, could there be a way over, we go out and we target areas, we say, this is the target area, we need to do an inspection, you need to do an inspection of your lateral, they get us, we find it needs to be lined, and we say, okay, it needs to be lined, here's the cost, we're going to, you're going to have to pay for it, but we've got a program where now you can pay it over the course of twenty years. And over that course of twenty years, the property's likely to sell, you know, automatically be paid back, or it's, has a special assessment on their property to help pay it off.
Okay.
Is that, the question was, do you need to have a fund created to, to do that, or could it be done through, you know, some sort of, I, I think it's like a debt mechanism, I guess, but all the debt is being paid for by the people who have to pay back into the system?
If you would issue debt to fund it, as Joe points out, you'd still need to fund the repair, if you issued debt to fund it, you'd have to, you have to spend those proceeds within a certain set of time, generally it's eighteen months to two years.
Mm-hmm.
So as long as you were spending down that debt that you were borrowing within the requisite timeframe, yeah, you could accomplish it that way. You wouldn't want to get into a situation where you've issued debt for fun, and again, when you issue the debt, you have to be specific in terms of what it's used for, so we would say it's only to be used for this. So if it didn't get spent, then you would have arbitrage, which is interest penalties that would apply to having, you know, spent dollars on hand. So as long as you could turn over the, turn over the funds, certainly that can be viable.
So if we said, we're going to do two hundred and fifty of these a year, we're going to line two hundred and fifty a year, we're going to target the location, you knew you were going to spend that to, that amount, hypothetically you could do it that way. And again, and again, the property owner is the one who'd be paying the interest and paying off the debt. It wouldn't be the general taxpayers, it'd be the people receiving the unique benefit paying it off.
Just a quick question, I, because I'm a little.
Sure.
On, on what you're saying. It, I think what you're saying is that the homeowner would pay the entire cost.
That's right.
There'd be no, like this insurance policy where you're only paying the fifteen hundred or the, what, the other thirty, whatever it is.
Right.
So they're going to pay, i- if there's a collapse and it costs them eighteen thousand dollars, they're going to pay the entire eighteen thousand, and we're going to bankroll them for twenty years.
Correct? Right.
What, what we're attempting to do here is try to get a program that's affordable for the citizens. And, you know, if you had a fifteen thousand dollar debt that you got to pay off in ten years, that might not be affordable to you.
Twenty years.
That might not be affordable.
But then again, it doesn't get, in my case, you know, I might be shooting myself in the foot, but I'm not paying for my contributing of the problem. I'm not paying for my INI. I'm opposite, because I can tell you, my, my lateral's not going to collapse, but I'm still contributing to the problem.
But through a target, but through a targeted approach of inspection, you would be required to have an inspection done every twenty-five years.
You're also looking at challenging every homeowner, you're going to tell them their lateral's leaking too much, they're going to tell you, show me, I don't believe it. So it's very hard to prove.
Well, and how do they do that? No, they do dye tests, don't they put dye on people's yards and then find it comes out?
You know, you're talking about spending more money to do the testing than the cost of the repair, so.
And, and I can, I can tell you that the residents of this city will come out and hang you for doing that, because you're going to be charging them an excessive amount of money to run this program where this is a reasonable P F A on a, paid on a quarterly basis that, that everyone can look at and say, okay, we've got a problem in West Dallas, we've got overflow in our, in our sewers, this is a, a measured approach to solving it that isn't going to cost any of us, any one of us, a whole ton of money. It's not going to cost some poor young family that just bought a home on the east end of town and finds out their lateral is no good, and, and they have a, a marginal mortgage to begin with, and now they get stuck with a ten thousand dollar sewer bill that they can't afford, even if we finance them for it, they can't afford the extra payments. So I look at this as, as saying, no, we're helping, we're helping our, our lower-income people in this community, along with the higher-income people in this community, because we're saving all of us the potential risk of having to pay one of these large lump-sum payments and taking care of an infiltration problem at the same time. I look at this as a very, very positive program.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman, like, yes, for our next.
Basically, the program was very well put together, and I have to compliment the engineering department. I'm wondering if a decision was made regarding the monies that have accumulated, and if there are some, a group of aldermen in their wisdom that decide to not continue this program, how these monies will be distributed then? That was a question that was posed previously.
I think if that ever came up, that would be an issue for the city attorney to try to resolve, because I don't know if there's a legal way to do that.
I don't see how it is. It was part of my opinion, is asking trouble, if you cease, and I didn't get the benefit, you just taxed me, and I think you'll see a lot of lawsuits for people who never received a benefit if they ever choose to do that. So once you continue it, but once you create it, you pretty much have to continue it or face a serious prospect of lawsuits that we're likely to be on the losing end.
On, on Tom's comment, I totally agree with what he has said. However, there is a segment of the population that, like Mike has indicated, hey, why should I pay into it? I'm never going to use it, I know that my laterals will be okay.
Well, it depends how you consider using it, because it's, if you're lowering the flows that are getting treated at MMSD, we don't pay for that sewage treatment, so everybody saves a little. You're providing a protection for your property that is going to be an incentive for when you sell that property, that's a, a positive thing. You don't have to worry about that old sewer, because the city has a program. I don't think you'll, you'll see that for a while in other communities, so. So to say you're, I, I think everybody has the advantage, just like you have an, you have a, an insurance policy, so you don't have to worry about something, you don't have to worry about your house, but you don't complain that, hey, I didn't make a claim this year, so I wasted money paying my homeowner's insurance. So it's similar, I hate to call it insurance, but it's, it's like an insurance policy. So what it does is it provides an incentive for people to participate in it, and it's a, it's a, probably a home saving for some people that can't afford a failure.
Thank you. And you just hit the nail on the head. I was going to use the idea of, of the insurance policy, the fact that I faithfully pay my insurance premiums every single year for my home, in twenty years I've made one claim. And yay, for me. I've put a lot of money out there, but I'm very grateful I haven't had to use it. Mike, I'm in the same boat as you, we are the highest house on our block, we're probably never going to have a problem, but yet I recognize I am contributing to the larger problem in this community as a whole. So I think that the hard sell is going to be to people like me and Mike, whose homes are in such a place where we're not, you know, we're not going to have the issue. I'm not going to have that twenty thousand dollar bill or fifteen thousand dollar bill in the next number of years because my lateral fails and I'm faced with that bill, but my neighbors potentially could.
This, this program also counts on ninety-nine percent of the homes not to fail each year. So otherwise the, the cost would be much greater. So if we did it on a fifty-year cycle, that doubles everything. To make it affordable, we went with the lifespan, the expected life of the laterals. We're seeing some failures now, not, not one hundred and seventy like this will be planned to fix, but we proactively get some before they fail, it's going to save us money in the end, and get us quicker into that reduction in our INI.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
All right. My, all right.
Closest one goes.
Okay, fine. You know, the fact really stands that, how, the way things are going, you know, I mean, first of all, I would like to see that, I want to hear the east side. To me, it's a citywide issue, you know, to me to say the east side, well, there is on, on the west side, there's some older home, forty, fifty, sixty years old, just as well. So on the east side, like where I live, well, there's homes that are forty years old. My home is thirty years old, I could say the same thing, I don't have to worry about any lateral failing down in the basement, you know?
Just to clarify, our bad basins go up to Eightieth Street, so I don't know where the east side.
Okay, but that's, that's what I'm adding to, you know? So to me, it should be avoided. To me, it's a citywide program, I think it will benefit everyone, you know, it's cost forty dollars a year more. And again, you know, City of Milwaukee, when they, they give everybody a free cart throughout, throughout the city, well, everybody was, oh, City of Milwaukee gave me a cart. You know what? City of Milwaukee went to buy money to buy those carts. So, so it's the same thing. If you want to create a program where you have to borrow money, well, of course, the taxiderist is going to pay for it on the right, you know, that's, that's what, the way I see it. And where we put it, to me, it's a good program, not just for tomorrow, but a hundred years from now, really. To me, that's, that's, that's.
Alderman. I just want to, and we're not being mandated at this point by MMSD in any way.
The, the only requirement we have is to address the INI, including private property. It doesn't say how to do that. So we could continue as we are, just, you know, you could have an informational program that, that help people, you know, fix things on their own, but when it comes down to it, if we have a great storm flooding in advance, they could take action, and who knows what they'll do.
Alderman, she was.
Let me add a couple of things. First of all, I, I still haven't even bought into the whole idea that here's the problem that we have down here is leaking laterals. I just, I still, to think that it rains and it goes through at six feet, ten feet of, of earth and then finds that hole and then gets that much water, I, I still have a problem with that. But going on with, with Scott says, we're, basically we start this program, it's never going to end. We're never going to be able to end it without getting sued in some fashion. You know, it goes back to what I originally talked about, is that, you know, truthfully, this is one of the hardest votes we're probably ever going to have, because it's going to be here forever. And that's why I, that's why I like to have a referendum, you know, on this. I know it takes longer and everything, and I know we went to the public hearings, but, you know, how many people showed up? But looking at the overall program, yes, it helps the people that, that needs the help, and like you said, it's going to go for a long period of time, where everybody in the city probably will be affected sooner or later. And so that, so the program, the way it's set up and, and the conversation we had and everything, and I, I think the program is set up well, but it's still, it's a, it's a very large step, and it's going to be committing to city forever.
Let me, let me add something. In the cost analysis in this report, it shows based on the ten dollar fee and, you know, today's costs, on how it's going to go in a hundred years. If ten years from now you decide, oh, load it, and we'll raise the special assessment, you have the authority to do that. Each year you can adjust those, you don't, if at some point you don't want to have a fee at all, and you've got a, a whole bunch of money in here, you can fund these through the, the money in the fund and have the special assessments paid back to that.
Go, go, go back ten years ago, what fees do we have now that are lower than they worked in here?
I was just going to say, when do we ever lower fees?
That's up to the council, though, to balance the fee with the special assessment. If you want to put more of the burden on the property owner, you can raise the special assessment, lower the fee. It's, it's a choice, kind of the direction that you were thinking of.
And, and also, I just, one of the things, we have on, on Fifty-seventh Street off of Greenfield, we've had, what, two laterals now that have been like thirty-seven thousand dollars, you know, that we ended up paying? Because for some reason they put the main twenty, twenty-five feet down, so it's extreme, that's extreme, but can you see, see to a property owner, my house is assessed at a hundred and ten thousand, I got to pay thirty-seven thousand for my cracked lateral.
Now those, when they get that deep, normally they have a riser, and the riser failed on those, that's why we paid them out of the sanitary fund. It's part of the main, the riser is part of the main. So the laterals, they're pretty standard depth, I mean, some of them are six feet, some of them are twelve feet, but.
I'm just saying the cost to fix it, though, because the overall cost was the same.
Right.
I mean, are we going to be, are we still going to be sitting here and saying, whose fault is it? On every one of it?
We will be. We will be dividing up, if it's on the sanitary main or part of the city's public system, it gets paid for out of that fund still. If it's the connection itself or riser, that's the public system. So, that'll be, continue to be paid out of the sanitary funds. Only if it's on the lateral from there to the house, that would be paid on this.
Joe, I just want to be clear. I'm just trying to explore other options that kind of came to mind today. That's why I was offering up that idea. It, it seems to me right now MMSD is already offering to do linings.
MMSD has an allocation of money that goes to all the communities. It's based on the value of community, they return some portion of their tax that they taxed us. And they require it's used on private property to reduce INI. We use it. We've done some lining, a pilot project. We've done mostly some plumbing installation. And I, I think it's best to keep using that money for some plumbing installation. We don't get a lot, it's $10,000, $20,000 a year. So, when you look at that, that's, that's, you know, not that many some plumbing.
Right. That's got to be 80 some laterals, right? How much is a lateral? Lining?
$5,000.
$5,000. So, yeah. Engineer's got to learn his math.
So, you're, you're looking at a spending almost $1 million a year on this.
Right. So, so that has to do with the linings, then to the, to the point about the failures and how it would be unfair to have a person pay that and pay it over the course of 10, 20 years through some sort of special assessment that follows the property. I think we got to remember right now, they're paying the full 15, $20,000 each out of their own pocket right now. So, that, that program is still a step above what's there now. Yeah, so people had to pay it last year.
What they're doing is fixing it when it fails because they have to. Nobody's going to fix their lateral because it leaks.
Right.
That's what we need to have happen. We have to get the laterals that are leaking. And we're not going to go looking for these all over and then enforce our, our plumbing code and say, you're putting too much INI in, you have to fix this. That would be.
Well, then how is this going to work if people don't volunteer?
This?
And, and will we really be reducing the inflow and infiltration then? Will we have accomplished the goals of this or did we create a program to fix broken pipes? You know what I mean? Do we just create a program to fix failures, to help people who can't pay for failures? Or are we actually going to target and go after?
We probably have.
Leaky pipes.
Many hundreds of laterals that get clogged with roots and they get them cleaned out every year or two. We have some people with that experience.
That's me.
And, well, hey, what that is, that indicates your pipe leaks a lot. So, your pipe should be repaired.
Right.
And somebody that's paying $200 every other year to have it cleaned out, would be happy to pay 150 bucks a year to never have to clean it again for, you know, for 10 years they pay 150 bucks and it's done. So, there is some incentive there. If it was $500 a year, I don't know if we'd get people to use it. And we really have to find a way to get people to fix the leaky laterals before they break.
Like I say, I, I don't think it's a, it's necessarily a bad program. I just wonder if there's another way to approach it, so. I, I just, before today, I was all in favor of this. I got a call from a lady last night in the district who actually works with a plumbing company and she had all sorts of questions on this. I don't know, I just got some, got me thinking that maybe there's something else that, that could be done.
And the guy with the roots, he'd be on a priority list anyways, right? He wouldn't get it done right away.
Maybe. Because what we look at is if we, if we had 300 of them, then some of them are going to be on a priority list for, and scheduled for the next year or depending on how bad it is, we don't want to let them fail and we'd get the worst ones first if there's so many that.
And it's always at, at your discretion, engineering discretion?
It's not engineering discretion. We're using a nationally accepted pipe evaluation system. So, we actually view the inspection and score the pipe based on its defects.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I'm just curious to know from staff if any other ideas have been floated out there that maybe haven't come to us.
I mean, we've discussed internally all of your ideas, like, I mean, two years ago. We started talking about this.
Yeah, this was like two years ago.
And we whittled it down to the program that basically Joe created here. So, in my view, it's pretty much after a couple of years, it's time to decide one way or the other what you want to do here. Because I believe that the financing issues, legal issues, for the most part, nothing's always 100% other than definitely taxes have been pretty much answered.
Definitely fees. And fees.
Mandatory insurance.
And that, you know, it's time to decide one way or the other because I, our work is done. This is, I truly believe this is the best program that we can put out that is fair to everybody. And again, everyone contributes to the problem. I'm the perfect example of that.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, just a last, see, if we approve this, I'm sure it would be additional brown properties within our area. I think that they might come, try to work on the same proposal that we probably just approved, you know, if we approve it.
Any other?
Two comments. One, there was some discussion about, you know, making people inspect their, their pipes. We can't do that nor can we inspect them. We have to have, just like any other search, this could be a search. And so, we either have to have probable cause to get a warrant or they have to agree to do it. So, there's not going to be any way to force them to agree to a search. And then there's one point of contention between Joe and I and the ordinance itself, that's subsection 6B4, disposition of revenue. The way Joe has it set up, the city is obligated to do all repairs. So, if we have an earthquake and you've got several thousand of them, you are obligated to pay for that. You don't have to do rehabilitations, but you do have to do repairs. When this was first drafted, I drafted with rehabilitation and repairs in there because I had thought that was one of the comments that you made is you don't want to be, have something. So, right now, it's just the rehabilitation. So, you are on the hook for a catastrophic event for all repairs as written. Even if the fund has no money, you'll have to borrow.
And what is that?
Section 6, disposition of revenue, B4.
The city shall have no obligation or duty to pay any cost for rehabilitation of sanitary laterals in excess of the amount in the fund for that year's operating budget.
Right. And it should, in my opinion, the way the council wrote it was repair or rehabilitation. Those are two different concepts. Rehabilitation is putting the insert in, repair is tearing it out.
So, we should add repair or?
Well, that's what I thought your intent was because as it's written right now, if there's a catastrophic event in the city, like an earthquake or something else, who knows what, and you've got thousands of these, you're obligated to pay this even though the fund has no money and you have to borrow or come up with some other funding mechanism to pay for. And I had thought that repair, I mean, you didn't want that is what I thought, so, but that's been taken out in this version.
I, I wanted to bring that up, but I also wanted to point out that currently, we're planning on about 20 to 25 failures a year and 170 rehabs. I'm not sure that there's a catastrophic event that would happen that would wipe out laterals without wiping out the homes that they serve and, and our sewer mains. So, I agree, it is a, it is a little more liability.
Is it a problem putting it in, repair?
It's not, except what I see is that now you're guaranteeing nothing for the fee. So, with it, with it out of there, you're at least telling people, we can fix your lateral if it fails, but we may have to schedule your rehab over. We don't have to pay for it anyway. So, I mean, it's a choice you got to make. We can add it in there. I just, I just personally thought that you may want to guarantee something out of this.
Mr. Chairman. I think either way, you're still guaranteeing that we're going to, we're going to spend the money for the purpose that it's, the guarantee is there.
This is just about if we didn't have any money left, we're not going to do your lateral because we're out of money for this year. That's what it said. You don't have to. We're out of money.
Okay. Yeah, then I think that's what we want, right?
Covering ourselves.
If you, if you have your lateral failed, it's not working and you got to fix it. And now we're going to tell you, we're not fixing it because we're out of money, so you got to fix it.
Or wait until next year or do whatever.
Well, you can't wait.
Yeah, I know. If it's catastrophic failure, I understand.
Rehabilitation, you could wait probably years.
Okay. Same exact example that we just happened to have 60 failures in, in a particular year and we're out of the money.
Yeah.
There's what, what now? We don't have a, nothing catastrophic. We're just, we, we had, oh my gosh, we had all these come through, we're out of money.
I would suggest at that point, you borrow the money to fix those and then relook at the fees.
Well, can't we do the same thing in, in the, the same case?
Yeah.
Well, then we'll look at borrowing the money and fixing those that if we, if we ran out.
It doesn't say we can't repair them, it just says we have no obligation to.
Correct.
Doesn't say we can.
Decide to go into debt, yes.
Yeah.
Even though it says you don't have to.
Either way. Either way.
Although it's currently written, it does say you have to repair, you have to.
You must do it.
You have, you must do it, right. So, if you put repair rehabilitation, then you can fund it if you want to for the ones that have totally failed.
We can make a decision at that point. A decision can be made.
It's whether you want to have it up front or decide if it ever happens. And this is, remember, a failure is your pipe is down and you've got sewage coming in your basement. So, you can't wait a year, you can't wait a week.
Totally understand. I just think in the case of, again, catastrophe, we, we have the opportunity that everybody, we, we can make a decision at that time.
Yes.
It, it allows us. The other way, it does not allow us to make a decision. It, it must be done. I like, I like the point of making the decision and having that option.
Want to make an amendment?
Yes, but I, I want to get the language correct. So, it reads currently.
Repair and.
Where it says for rehabilitation, say for repair and rehabilitation.
For.
I move as stated.
Rebuild?
Repair or.
I move to amend as stated.
Second.
We moved and seconded to amend the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, on the original motion as amended.
Mr. Chair, one more quick thing. I just wanted to just reiterate, we can start this whole program up in just a matter of months, once, once it gets passed, correct?
According to Mark, we could start it.
Take immediately.
Couple of weeks or immediately?
We could start it as soon as.
Tonight. So, so one of the precipitating things here is this possibility of an order from MMSD and the, and the DNR. Is that true? That's, that's part of what's driving this whole conversation is this impending order to solve the problem. We're not under.
There's a couple of things driving this, I guess. We, we do need to look at our INI.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that, but.
It's possible that they could. I, I highly doubt that they'll take any action unless we have some flooding events and they're kind of forced to do something.
And this order would take them how long to put together process and impose on us? Weeks, months, a year? Months, probably?
I don't know, it depends.
I understand, we've been talking about this for two years and we may all be sick of talking about it, but we're talking about adding a new fee to every residential property in the city forever. And one of the major reasons we're talking about this is a what if.
Well, it's not a what if when it comes to flooding. Now, we have been handling severe flooding for a number of years, but this is what this is also trying to address is the flooding issues and the backup issues and the, and people getting their basements backed up.
But if we wait six months.
But we can't do that automatically without a program.
We approve this today, we're not going to solve any problems this year. You know, this is going to be a gradual 100-year program.
That's why it's important to start now.
If we, if we adopted it today, I would have a small rehab project out this fall.
Right.
So, and, and the plan is to only have one contract for rehabilitations per year.
You have one contractor doing all?
Going to box a bid.
Out of the bid, yeah.
For 107 year, however many we're going to do that year.
I just, I just don't like the fact that we're doing this with the expectation of an order coming from the DNR and, and/or MMSD.
The other big issue this addresses at least is just the aging laterals.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
We're going to see more and more failures.
And people could buy their own insurance if they wanted to. We've referred to this as insurance, but this is only insurance in the sense that everybody's paying a little bit into a fund and then some people will be taking big money out of it every year. This is mandatory. This isn't an, and you said it, it won't work if it's an opt-in because not enough people will opt in. We're forcing every residential property owner, one in, one in two families, right? Or is it everyone?
One to three.
One to three families.
Yeah.
We're forcing them all to pay a new fee forever.
Because it's a program to reduce INI throughout the city. Yes, it would be a, it's a city problem. We don't pretty much charge the city, so.
One last time, then I'll shut up. Every 100 years, this is going to happen continually, right? I mean, and we're expecting that when people see that they're only going to have to pay $1,500 to repair their lateral, that they're going to feel like they're getting some big deal out of it. When in reality, I don't think a person knows how much it costs to line a lateral. I mean, they don't know if it's 5,000, they don't know if it's 1,500. We know that they're getting a deal, but when a person is having roots break into their pipe, or the pipe's already broken and the roots are getting in and the, the pipe continues to deteriorate, it may be cheaper for that person to just every couple of years, spend a couple hundred bucks and clean it out. How are we actually going to get people to volunteer for this? I mean, to me, it almost, you know, thinking about it further, I think in the short term we might have that, but in the long term, we're just going to end up with a, a fund to, to make repairs for people. Are we really going to be reducing the INI? People have to voluntarily come into this and pay $1,500. And we really expect that every year, we're going to get 170 people to voluntarily say, I could clean it for 200 this year, wait in a couple of years, do it for another, or I could pay $1,500 now and I might not own the house in five years. Why, this, this isn't, this isn't going to.
Alman, I can't answer your question.
Well, I'm still talking. This, this, how can this work long-term if people don't volunteer for it? And then, and then if people aren't volunteering for it, if we're really going to accomplish the goals of the program, we have to go after people. But then how do we set, you said probable cause. How do you get probable cause and get people to volunteer for this?
Going after them, the way that it's intended by this program is we're going out and, and asking people if we can inspect their lateral. We'd show them what their lateral looks like and.
Or then you force it on them.
Yeah. They'll see how bad.
If their lateral looks really bad, they, they should be concerned that they're going to have a backup. So, I would think that, you know, most people would want to do it. So, and from what we've seen from the few that were televised, they're not in good shape.
I just, you know, again, long-term, I, I just don't know. I think short-term, we're going to have people volunteering for this thing, they're going to want to go at it. I think long-term, we're going to be begging people to go at it. I do. And I wonder if it's really doing the job of the INI reduction long-term. And if it's working short-term, great, but long-term, how do you stop the program?
Until you see how the program works, I guess, the program's going to change.
We have to pass the bill and it's in the bill.
Well, just going to say.
Pass the bill and it's.
Whenever we see it working.
Mr. Chairman.
Alman Barzak.
The, the other way, in, in the long-term, if, if the program is, is working short-term and then all of a sudden, we're having people having trouble volunteering, we can reduce the rate of people paying. We, we have the right to lower and raise. So, all of a sudden, 30 years from now, we're saying, you know, there, there's not many So all of a sudden, 30 years from now, we're saying, you know, there's not many people that are out there that want to have this done. We reduce the rate, so we reduce the amount of income coming into the program. All of a sudden, we need to pick it up, we can raise that back up. We see the opposite, we can raise the rate too, to cover more should we have to. But I think the one thing that's nice in the program is we have the mechanism to be able to control it at all times for the 100 years, 200 years, 300 years forward.
But to the point of a public good, the user getting a public good out of this, if people aren't volunteering for it, it's not serving the program's purpose. Now, people are paying in to fix someone else's lateral. Where's the public good in that? Am I off base, Scott? A user fee...
Question for Joe to answer, not me.
But a user fee, but it's also a legal question because a user fee, a person has to know that they're getting a benefit out of it of some sort. And if people aren't volunteering for it...
The thing about 12 times is that it reduces overall I and I in the city. That's the...
If people volunteer to participate, but if they don't...
It also protects everybody in the program if you did have a failure, so you do have a benefit.
So it's a failure program.
No.
Am I making any sense there?
I think so.
Right. From what I've been hearing with phone calls is people that have backups, they got to get their roots cut out, want to get their lateral fixed. And if that is the case, we're going to have more than our people volunteering.
You know, I think the one thing you have to remember, and Joe, you hit on it a little while ago, we haven't had floods for a few years. Wait until you start getting the floods again, because it's going to happen, whether it's this summer, next summer, the summer after, there will be floods again. And this program is going to help to mitigate those floods. It's going to help to reduce the inflow and infiltration. It's exactly what we have to do to eliminate that flooding or at least reduce the potential for flooding in this city. And until we do something, it takes some action, nothing's going to happen. You're going to have flooding in the same old places you have every time. So, you know, I'm looking at this and saying, this is a benefit for everybody. It isn't just a benefit for the few people with a lousy lateral, it's a benefit for everybody that lives in that neighborhood that floods all the time because it's going to help reduce the inflow and help reduce the flooding. You have to look at the overall picture.
We may have to look at other ways to incentivize this, so, you know. I don't know yet because we haven't done it. So from what I've heard, it seems like there's a very strong interest in getting these laterals that have to be cleaned all the time and if people want to get them fixed, they want to have to worry about going away and coming back to a backed-up basement.
Mr. Chairman, I said before was my last comment. You know, if you go outside West Alice and the west part of West Alice, there's people, they pay for water bills over $200 and above, really, quarterly. They pay more than what we pay in West Alice here. So the question is, is $40 a year for homeowners, I mean, I'm sure that's money, but to me, again, that's beneficial for everyone, you know? And to me, that's, we should move forward because we keep hashing over and over and over. I mean, that's great that we've been talking about it, but there is a time whether we should approve it or kill it.
Alderman Probst?
Is there, Joe, is there any way to create a pilot project, a pilot program where we, I hate to say this, but you know, it's like you want to test the hypotheses?
We are.
I realize that.
For 27 other cities.
Has this been done in another city?
With the charge she's talking about, like for $1,500, we'll fix your lateral and see how many people...
Cost of living is different around the country, but I'm saying, has there been other municipalities that have done something like this?
Well, I know Fox Point inspected laterals and told people, fix it on their own. You know, we don't have incomes like Fox Point residents, so we can't do that.
So we're really going to be out there as like a trailblazer?
Well, we've done similar work with MMSD's money. We've done the lining of laterals. And it got, well, 93 or 95 out of 100 people volunteered for it, so I think some of the houses were vacant, so they didn't come.
And Racine did a program, right? But not the entire lateral.
Theirs is not I and I related.
That's the only one I knew about.
They just automatically line the laterals up to the property as they come through with any work. And they charge $50 a year for that, so.
On their water bill?
On the water bill or whatever. It's a utility fee, so.
Mr. President, is there a motion on the table already?
Yep, there's a motion as amended. Any further discussion? If not, I'm going to call a roll on this. Alderman Barzak?
Aye.
Alderman Shapuski?
Aye.
Alderman Haas?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Probst?
Aye.
Alderman Ranki?
Aye.
Alderman Roach?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
Aye.
Alderman Weigel?
No.
Alderman Lysick votes aye. Motion passes eight to two. Then we've got item 24, which is resolution to create policies and procedures, section 2823, how to describe the standard policies followed by engineering division in regard to administering the residential private sanitary influence filtration reduction fund program. Is there a motion on this?
I should move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for, this is to put it in the policy and procedures manual, the procedure for doing it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nine to one. Then we've got item 26, which is communication to be placed on file. Is there a motion? This is on this I and I.
Second.
We moved and seconded. All in favor of place this on file, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Then we've got item 30, which is communication from the director of public works engineering introducing a proposed park policy. Any discussion on this?
You've got four minutes to talk about it.
You need alcohol in the parks. Just real quickly, because I think a front burner issue on this is the skate park. We have a group that wants to rent our skate park for an event in July. I have several concerns I wanted to bring to you guys about. The idea is the skate park rental we have billed at $300 for a day, and that would be the entire day, which is dawn till 10:00 PM. This would grant this person, group business, exclusive use of the park for that period. You know, just that's what we're doing here with renting parks, you know? You can't have somebody playing volleyball in the middle of wedding ceremony, you know? And this would be, this particular event would be what's called a jam, it's a competition. So the competitors pay to enter this. So in a sense, he's doing sales. We don't allow this. Well, is he reselling the use of the park to the competitors? Maybe it's a question for Scott. I guess, and maybe I'm just thinking, overthinking this, okay, I don't think he needs it for dawn till 10:00 PM for this thing. It's more likely, say, a noon to four thing or something. I would like to see it when he's not, it's not being used specifically for this competition as long as possible, it's free and open to the public to use as it typically is. I'm kind of maybe reading too much into this. He could conceivably, I rented the park today, you want to skate today, it's five bucks. He could just, he could conceivably do that, or a person could conceiv... I'm not saying he would, I don't know anything about this individual. He's obviously running, he's doing a statewide thing of this. He obviously enjoys the sports, supports the skating thing. It's just a question I have about how the policy that we're adopting, he may, I don't go to skate events, but I've been to cycling events and typically these events bring along vendors. There's a vendor who's a sponsor of the series, like Coffee Company maybe, or Red Bull or somebody, and they may be expected to be able to come along to our park and sell their product in our park. You know, it gets a lot to the special event side of the park rental versus, say, a wedding or company picnic.
And you're absolutely right. I would have those same concerns, Alderman Weigel. And certainly if that were the case, where you've got Red Bull or somebody coming in, if they're going to be in our park selling something, I would certainly say that just as any other entity like State Fair or anything, you better give me a commission.
No.
You know, the city better be making a cut on the money or some kind of fee to have these people, allow them to have a spot in the area to sell. And I'm not sure I'm in favor of that period. All I'm saying is if that is the case, we better get reimbursed something for it.
You know, maybe right now, because this event is, there's time constraints, it's coming up, I wouldn't have a problem if we just approved it and just kind of like maybe let it fly, or if it's the rest of the policy, you know? But just, you know, I wouldn't have a problem if we just had, say, an experimental event, this one event, and the guy understands, this is a new policy for us, we haven't had these kind of demands on our parks before.
Can always change it if it doesn't work.
We can always change it later on.
Yeah. Alderman May? I'd offer a suggestion that, I don't even know if we need a parks policy to do that. Couldn't we just do it as kind of a pilot? One, and then second, I guess that'd be my first question. Secondly, try and make a motion that we maybe recess until our council recess and come back and talk about this policy in further detail, or?
Well, I don't know if we have to. Let's...
There are questions on alcohol, fees?
Well, I mean, the whole policy, yes.
Yeah.
We're just talking about, do you think, just talking about this skate thing?
But that's not on the agenda. We're talking about the policy as a whole. So I'm recommending that we go and that we recess to the council recess.
And come back to...
Because it's seven o'clock. And come back as a committee of the whole.
We can either wrap this up in five minutes right now, or? Do you think we're going to wrap it up in five minutes?
Yeah, I hate to discontinue the discussion because you're going to start doing the whole thing all over again.
Okay. I watch the discussions.
We've already done rentals of parks without this policy, but so you could do the skate park rental without this policy being in place. This is a big, widespread, all kinds of different policy issues, none of which have been addressed by this body, which is where we need the answers from. And I don't think you're going to get an answer tonight unless you have a full hour on discussion like you had on source. So to put your concern, it could be rented out and Mike can just create, here are the list of things of do's and don'ts, and here's the fee, take it legal without a policy, because we've done that before.
Kathy, can I can share her concerns with Mike about any event?
No, absolutely not.
Yeah. Actually, this is a public works.
Yeah, I wouldn't take it up right now. I'd hold it until we have more time.
Yeah, I mean, there are countless issues to discuss.
Do you want to do that at recess?
No. No, this is going to be a long meeting.
That's a meeting, all in itself.
Yes.
Solve the problem.[1776.31]